Yeah, Raritan Township Planning Board is now in session.
Call to order. The notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied by the placing of a notice at this meeting on the bulletin board of the municipal building, filing the notice with the township clerk and transmitting the notice to the Hunterdon County Democrat, the Courier News, the Star Ledger and the Trenton.
Thank you, Mr. Bellardo. Roll call, please.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Geding.
Here.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Here.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Here.
Mr. Scott McDay.
Here.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Here.
Ms. Michelle Cavacari.
Here.
Ms. Lisa Fania.
Here.
Mr. James Miller.
Here.
Mr. Glenn Sokolowski, and he asked to be excused. Board professionals, Board Attorney, Mr. John Bellardo.
Here.
Township Landscape Architect, Mr. John Morgan Thomas, he asked to be excused. Traffic Consultant, Mr. Jay Troutman, he asked to be excused. Township Planner, Mr. Jeffrey Baccarella.
Here.
Board Planner, Ms. Jessica Caldwell, she is asked to be excused. Township Engineer, on behalf of Mr. Paul Ferrero, we have Mr. Mark Katrinia.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Next up would normally be minutes. We do not have any minutes to approve this evening. Citizens' privilege for anyone here in the room with us this evening, or if anyone is online, this is your opportunity to address the board on any items other than what's on the agenda.
And there's nobody on.
There is nobody online.
Nope.
Okay, well, thank you. Okay, we'll move on. Next up are our two public hearings. If you're here for Flemington Concrete Products, by the way, that has been moved back to a later date, and we're going to change the order this evening. The first one up is Hunterdon Land Trust.
Evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Steven Gruenberg, attorney in Flemington, New Jersey, on behalf of the Hunterdon Land Trust. We're excited to present to you a site plan waiver application for the DeBoer Farm. And the DeBoer Farm is a well-known landmark in the township of Raritan, and there are exciting things that are taking place that we wish to discuss with the board in terms of our site plan waiver application. Just to refresh the board as to what the standard is for a site plan waiver, it's found in section 296-45 of your ordinance, and it says that the planning board may waive the requirement of site plan review if the proposed development (a) secured previous site plan approval under the terms of this chapter, and that the proposed development has insignificant impact; (b) involves normal rare repair, maintenance, or replacements such as a new roof, painting, new siding, or similar activity; or does not affect existing circulation, drainage, building arrangements, landscaping, buffering, lighting, and other considerations of site plan review. We think we meet all three of those standards, but we actually only need to meet one of them in order to qualify for site plan review. We also want to talk to you about what we're going to be doing, and the staging of this approval and the staging of the project, because we do realize that certain things, we're going to have to come back to you for actual formal site plan review. But we want to get started in terms of the buildings and some utilities in order to be able to start to use the barn structure for what its intended purposes are. And rather than listening to me, I'd like you to present two witnesses this evening, Catherine Suttle from the Hunterdon Land Trust and Christopher Pecel, local architect. And do you want both of those witnesses sworn now?
Mine's well. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth or otherwise affirmed in connection with this application? So help you God with regard to your testimony tonight. Both of you are sworn, and our professionals remain under oath.
And I'd like to call Catherine Suttle. You're gonna sit right there. You're gonna want to talk.
Into the microphone.
Don't touch it, because it's...
Okay.
Sensitive.
Sensitive, that's a word.
Okay. Hi, Lisa. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Catherine, why don't you tell the board your position with the Hunterdon Land Trust?
I am the Director of Cultural Resources, and I've been with the Hunterdon Land Trust since 2007.
And what is the Hunterdon Land Trust, for those who don't know?
So, we are a nonprofit organization, a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt nonprofit. We were founded in 1996 by a group of residents concerned about unplanned development in the county. Our mission, I'm just going to read the mission, it's kind of long, is to preserve the integrity of the rural landscapes in Hunterdon County region by protecting and enhancing natural resources and the cultural landscape of the historic DeBoer Farm for public enjoyment and education. Since our inception, we've preserved, helped preserve over 11,500 acres of farmland and open space. We've done some of that in Raritan Township. And to do this, we partner regularly with many municipalities in the county, and with the county itself, and also with other nonprofits.
Let's talk a little bit about the DeBoer Farm. Why don't you tell them about the history of the DeBoer Farm and Hunterdon Land Trust's relationship with that property?
Okay. So, as many of you know, probably, the farmstead has a long history dating back to the 1730s. Most of what we focus on today relates to its period of significance, which is between 1798 and 1940, which is a very wide period of significance. But the buildings that you see today represent different parts of that period of significance. They're still standing. HLT was still an all-volunteer organization when it took title to the DeBoer Farm back in 1999, and it knew that it was taking on a serious commitment to the community to make the property a public resource. So that was a long time ago, but the commitment resulted in a lot of work for the organization. We've done a lot of planning. We did a public was involved in master plan. In the master plan in 2009, we did a site management plan. So we, my point is, we've done a lot of serious planning for the site. So this project that we're talking to you about today, as a result of all that planning, there's been a lot of serious consideration put into it.
This is something that Hunterdon Land Trust has been working on for years, so to say. And it's probably a project that might go on for years, too.
That's true. That's very true.
And it's something that Hunterdon Land Trust has worked both with the township and the borough of Flemington in its planning of this property.
That's right. We've also taken advantage of, we've had funding from the New Jersey Historic Trust. We've had input from them as far as the planning processes that we've followed, and also any of the restoration work that we've done on the farm, so that we've made sure that we are now, this project is also under their purview, that we are following the Secretary of Interior Standards of Historic Preservation. And we've also, you know, made sure that Green Acres is on board with what we're doing. So we, you know, we've kept, kept all our, all our funders and people that care about what we're doing, we've kept them informed, and they've helped us a lot.
So it's a lot to do in order to get, fair to say, anything done on the property.
Yes. It's one of the most constrained properties.
But here we are, to be able to make some changes and improvements to the property.
Right.
What are the current functions on site that take place at the DeBoer Farm with the Hunterdon Land Trust?
Well, one of the biggest things, and the one you all probably know about, is our farmer's market. That's in, it'll be in its 16th season this year. We have attendance in 2022. We count cars. So the average number of cars was about 350 cars a week. Some weeks it's 500 cars during the market, and we translate that, we multiply by two to estimate the number of people that come to the market. So it can be up to 1,000 people that come to the market on a market day, on any given market day. It is our primary venue at this time for educational demonstrations and our programming that we do. So, for the most part, these programs are held outside. We have restored a wagon house on the property and we, into a rustic classroom. And so we do have programs there. There's, there are outside groups that have meetings there sometimes, not other nonprofits. Private individuals have small events there. The capacity is 46 people. The corn crib, which is beside it, is we store farmer's market materials in there. The bank barn, the U-shaped complex, the bank barn and the North L are part of the, this project. The East L, the east leg on the Flemington side, that's where we store stewardship supplies. In the garage, we store things there. Farm office, we store some papers, organization papers, and the horse barn is empty at this time. That's the one with the riding on the roof.
And the home, the home residence is now the...
It's the offices of the Hunterdon Land Trust. And we do have some small events there as well.
And right now, the...
Oh, just one thing to mention, sorry.
It's okay.
The farm, the stone house where the HLT's offices are, that's the only bathroom on the property. And it's the only condition building on the property at this time.
Okay. So, we have the L barn is really the main reason why we're here today. And what's currently the use of, or historically the use of the L barn?
Well, it was, when we took title to the property, there was a theater prop company there, and they stored props in the buildings. They closed their business in 2021 because of pandemic, so they've moved out.
That was essentially, they rented space.
They did. Yes, they were a tenant.
And that was a way of the Hunterdon Land Trust actually funding some of the...
It helped quite a bit. It was, it's been quite a loss of revenue for us from them leaving. Yeah.
And the proposed use of the L barn now that we're here for tonight?
The proposed use is a, a public, a multi-use, public space for public and private events and for our programming. Like I said, we, the other places, the other buildings on site where we do have our programs and meetings, the capacity is quite small. This would allow us to have larger conferences, meetings, educational programming, and then also public and private events.
It'll allow you to have educational and fundraising activities throughout the year.
Yes.
Not just in the spring months.
Right. That's right.
You'll actually be able to do something in the winter.
Right. And it will also allow us to have public restrooms that would be available to hikers. They would be available at all times. This has been designed so that there would be access from the trails or during the farmer's market, so that the public could use a bathroom if they needed to.
It'll allow for various public and private meeting spaces, too, for others, correct?
Yes.
So it won't just be potentially for the use of Hunterdon Land Trust if the township or any other group wishes to rent the space. That's a possibility.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Our understanding is that there aren't spaces of this size, and that there is a need for space this size in the county. It would, it would accommodate about 250 people.
And it also allows for the income.
Yes.
And the revenue in order to be able to make the improvements and run the DeBoer Farm.
Right.
To be able to maintain.
Right. To maintain the historic buildings, also to provide a diverse, a more diverse revenue stream for the Hunterdon Land Trust, so that we can continue to preserve land.
Those type of activities are something that are common for nonprofits, correct?
Yes. Yes.
An example is the Paulsville.
Mill. That's right.
Where they have their historical significance in preserving those buildings, but also have the ability to have the space.
Yes. Yeah, there's a place in Mercer County that does that as well. Yeah.
And it's, it's an accessory use to what you're already doing as part of a nonprofit function, correct?
Yes.
And parking's not really an issue for you, because you already have parking for the farmer's market, correct?
Yes. Yeah, we can accommodate over 100 cars at a time in that field.
So let's talk about the staging of what we're going to do here, because that's, that's kind of important. My understanding, the first stage is, is going to be for structural and, and preservation of the historical elements of the barn for future generations. And that's going to be structural repairs, correct?
That's correct. Structural repairs, removing nonhistoric elements of the building, removing asbestos, putting on a new roof, which is badly needed, new siding, insulation, windows, and exterior doors. So the building will be protected into the future.
And that's, that's a problem right now, correct?
Yes.
Because the building is deteriorating?
Yes.
And these are things that need to be done?
Yes.
And are expected to be done starting in the spring, correct?
We hope to start, we expect to start. We're not hoping anymore. We expect to start in soon.
Okay. So going back to the, the site plan waiver criteria, we're not expanding the footprint, correct?
That's correct.
We're, we're doing things such as new siding and a new roof. And that's all allowed to be approved by this board as a site plan waiver, correct? The stage two, or stage two of it, will actually to be able to bring utility upgrades to the site and rehabilitate the barn for current and future public use.
Right.
What's that going to entail?
Well, that will involve building a new septic system connecting to city water, and it will, we will upgrade the electric service to the site, and it will, we'll be putting in the public bathrooms, which will be very important. We'll be putting in a warming kitchen, circulation features of the building, sprinkler system.
So our, our request, now let me back up, putting in a new septic system, even if you just wanted to put in a new septic system, that's something that you would be able to do just by getting the building.
Yes. Yes. And hooking up to the, to city water, we're using well water today.
Okay. So both of those things wouldn't ordinarily require a site plan approval?
I wouldn't think so.
So what we're here tonight to ask for is permission to do those things, the stage one and stage two, which would allow for the renovation of, of the L barn and to be able to connect to the utilities. In the future, there's going to be more significant site improvements, correct?
That's correct.
And that's what we are holding off to the side, because we know we're going to have to come before the board for site plan approval for those things. But just to give the board an idea of what will be coming down the pipe, that will include improvements to the access.
Yes. It'll be a new entrance, a safer entrance, not off the circle, and improved parking. The area that, where the parking is would be improved. There would be some sidewalks and landscaping, storm management systems, and site lighting.
Okay. So all of those things that are exterior to the structure and are site issues, we know we have to come back before the board for site plan approval, formally approved. All we're seeking for right now is the renovation to the L barn building, which does not expand the footprint.
Right.
And connecting the public water and doing the septic. We already have a septic design prepared and ready to go that will be approved by the board, correct?
Yes.
I think we answered everything.
Okay. Good.
You have to wait for a question.
That's okay.
I don't have any further questions at this time. Christopher Pecel will be presenting testimony as to the actual renovation.
Just to throw that out to the board for questions.
So I'm a bit overwhelmed. So at this point, you're asking for the stability kind of what you're calling phase one, the roof, asbestos removal, those types of things.
Structural repairs, siding.
But then you're also asking on the phase two to be able to basically do all the interior renovations to create the event space, which, when your update comes up, it sounds like it's a pretty big event space that will be coming in.
Yes. It's a big building.
Yeah. I know. It's going to be wonderful and a great resource to the community. But I guess where I'm having trouble understanding is if you're creating an event space, which is going to generate, you're asking us for approval to go ahead and do this event space rehab, that's gonna, as soon as it's done, you're going to be wanting to put people in it, and we haven't seen a sewer and a water design, or the stormwater management, or your parking lot. I'm just concerned about that disconnect, because you're creating a use activity, which we haven't approved, all the other things associated, which normally under site plan you would do.
Yeah, I think our point is that the existing parking is adequate for that type of use, because her testimony was, the farmer's market has sufficient parking in order to be able to do the farmer's market, which would accommodate the event space use, and it's not intended to overlap each other. So the, the site issues, I don't think, come into play until we actually decide to do the change in the access, the access, the ingress and egress, and landscaping, and lighting, and all those other issues. Right now, all we're seeking to do is change that space for that type of use. That's actually already going on right now, but allow it to take place inside. Part of the problem here is the chicken and the egg, because, you know, in order to fund a lot of these activities, you need to be, and improvements, you need to have that revenue stream in place to be able to, to fund it. And that's why our goal is to be able to get that space productive in order to be able to do everything else, recognizing that we have to come back before the board for those formal issues of stormwater management. When we do change the exterior, which right now we're not doing, we're only using the existing parking. Yeah, we can, yeah, we can provide a septic design, although that's really a county board of health issue.
Right. But normally, we ask for, I mean, I'm just also confused with, since the sewer is available, why, and it was, and it was, have you reached out to RTMUA and...
Yes.
Oh, yes. We've tried Flemington, too. We've been turned down. We spent quite a bit of, better part of a year trying to find someone, a municipality, that would let us hook up to their sewer. And I understand the capacity issues on both towns, and so we do not have that option.
That was, that was my first foray into this whole project, was probably a year and a half ago, trying to make that happen, and that went nowhere, which is why we have to go by way of septic.
I love the project. I love what you're doing. But it just seems like we're creating an activity that comes to the market, the parking lot gets muddy. It wouldn't meet our standards. So that's where, it just seems like this is kind of pushing the boundaries of the waiver request, when it is supposed to be for like roof repairs and in-kind replacement, not reading a new story of it.
I think as Mr. Gruenberg indicated, and he correctly cited the, the section 296-45, and the operating boards are, the planning board may waive the requirement of site plan review. So it's up to the board to reach a comfort level.
Yeah.
To decide whether they want to waive or not. It's not the planning board shall waive. It's really, they're, they're asking not to go through the formal site plan approval process. And I, you know, I've given this direction before. It's not new to the board when we have these applications that are, that are presented.
And I think this is kind of, and I agree. And I think it's kind of a unique situation and a unique use for, that is a quasi-public-private type use, that, you know, again, the chicken and the egg, in order to make this thing happen, there arguably has to be some latitude in your, by relying upon that ordinance to allow it to happen by a site plan waiver, realizing that the ultimate goal here is to be able to improve that parking lot and the ingress and egress to the site, which costs a whole lot of money, and the funding is being worked on in order to make that happen. But in the interim, in order to make it happen, we need this type of relief to get it moving.
So on average, how many people or organizations or activities are going on on a daily basis? How many cars are, would be on site during the week?
You mean in the future?
Yeah. Or, or if I'm understanding, you're taking these activities and putting them in this space. So exist, right now, how many people or how many cars or people are on site now engaging in those activities?
Well, right now, most of the programming, most of the activity we have is with, in conjunction with the farmer's market. So the number of people that are on site anywhere from 700 to 1,000 on a market day, and, and those people would be, some of them attend the programs that are part of the market, some of them don't. So right now, you know, but what we're talking about for the event center would be larger groups of people. For private events, it would only occur on the weekends, only on Friday and Saturday would not, it would not be done during the farmer's market. And, and other events could occur during the week, you know, depending on if nonprofits or other groups wanted to rent the space for, you know, a meeting or a conference or something like that. I don't know if that really answers your question.
It does. It does.
Okay.
Just a question on timing. So phase one, I guess I'd call it, would be structural repairs, hopefully starting in spring, not hopefully, but...
Yeah.
How long would that take? Any idea?
The contractor is estimating five months.
Okay. The next phase, I guess you call it the utility upgrades. When would that start? Would that be simultaneous, and when you could?
Well, we are in the process of raising the money for that second phase. That's quite inexpensive, as you can imagine. So that's probably one to two years out.
And I don't know if you're the right person to comment on this, but looking back at the notes from 2010, there's a number of things that were not commented on, which just know the, I'm sorry, the 2010 documents that we received, there were no comments at that time with respect to fire. You're fixing the space, but now you're going to have people in that space. Can you comment on...
That'd probably be better for Mr. Pecel.
And that's fair.
Comment on the architectural and then fire issues.
That's fine. We can hold off.
Yeah, they'll be addressed. Yeah.
Just have one question. Is there ever a concept plan or anything related to the master plan with the change of use and everything that's proposed, the DeBoer master plan?
The DeBoer master plan had the, the uses that we're talking about today in it. And then there was a site management plan that was followed it, that was more in-depth, that included an architectural study and landscape plan that was done in 2014. That also reflects what we're proposing today.
And the amount of parking is, was studied at that time with the amount of people that are posted?
Yes. That's been looked at by the design team, actually, that's been working on this project as well. Yeah. So more recently than that.
Any other questions? I think we should, well, we should open up to the public. If the public has any questions, there's nobody online with that testimony?
Think we should, well, we should open up to the public if the public has any questions. There's nobody online with that testimony?
C A T H E R I N E. Oh, yeah. Subtle S S as in Sam, U T T L E.
Chris, I know you prepared before this board, but do you wanna briefly give your qualifications unless he can be accepted?
Resident Raritan Township. My office is on Main Street. I've been a registered architect since nineteen eighty-seven in New Jersey. Have a license in Pennsylvania, New York. Testified before many, many planning boards, Raritan, Reddington, Flemington. I grew up in Maristown. We do Maristown, Menden, Madison, Princeton.
Well, thank you.
I offer Mr. Pickle as a next year's secretary. Thank you.
I am. Went to survey this property with them in nineteen ninety-nine. We worked with the land trust for longer than anyone. It's been on the land trusts, I think. And we, we actually measured the buildings for them in two thousand and five. And I've been talking about this project off and on for as long as I've known the people at the land trust.
You, you submitted, we've submitted architectural plans for the L building. Why don't you explain to the board briefly what, what we're planning on doing in the arrangements?
So the, um, the bank barn is the great big magnificent barn in the back that you see as, as you drive around. And the horse barn is the one with the words on the top. It's not part of this project. So this. This U-shaped courtyard, there's aerial photos from the thirties. It's pretty much the same as it was then. And the slate roof.
Why don't we just, since we have a transcript, why don't you identify? The plans that you're pointing at for the record, including the revisions and things like that. That way we go to good resolution. We know what we're talking about.
Sure. I, I'm mostly just gonna refer to this one, which is T, my title sheet, which has all three floor plans. They did December twenty-second, twenty twenty-two.
Do you want that separately marked or we're referring to it? It's what, there's been no.
Yeah, I, I think you meant, we have, we have in front of us, the title sheet, just for the record.
Right.
It's, it's entitled the Devois Farm Bank Barn Assembly Space for the Hundred and Land Trust. Prepared by Mr. Pickle and we have. A revised schematic date of November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. A sixty-five percent CD date of October twelve. Twenty twenty-two and a ninety-five percent CD date of January three. Twenty twenty-three. Is that what you're referring to there?
Yes, yeah. These are, what I have here are the same as, as your package.
Okay.
A one point one, a one point two, a one point three. And then there's some extra elevations. A two point one, a two point two, a two point three. Didn't burden you with another twenty drawings?
You were, you were talking about.
So the, the main barn is built, we believe in eighteen eighties, eighteen nineties. It's a sawn. Virgin growth hemlock timber frame. It's really magnificent on the inside. It had been clogged up with their tenants' props for twenty years. No one could actually see what the building looks like on the interior. It's now been emptied out and it's, it's pretty magnificent. And so we'd like to share that with the public. As an architect, I think the glory of these barns is actually the interior, it's the wonderful, huge space, the great timbers and, and all that sort of thing. So. To turn that into a space that the public can go into and enjoy, just on an educational program. I give barn tours as well as these events and, and other opportunities. I think it's a wonderful thing to share with everybody. It's part of the heritage of the county. So in order to do that. I work with a lot of barns. We, I work with New Jersey Barn Company. They take them down, sell them to billionaires. We send them to the Hamptons, it becomes a house and no one gets to. Get an invitation to see the inside of the building. It's much nicer to restore one in place on site. Barns have no economic viability for the farmers, so some of them try to run them as a wedding event. And they do it without, they do it illegally and without, uh. Without meeting building codes. You have to have fire sprinklers. It's a two-story assembly space, so we will be putting in a full fire sprinkler system. It's, it's a wooden building. It's a huge wooden building, so it needs, the fire protection needs some proper stair. It needs an elevator to get handicapped people up and down between the two levels. We'll have entrances on all four sides of the barn actually, so that public access will be quite easy, but right now there's no stair on the interior of the barn to get you from one level to the next. So we'd be addressing all of those things, bringing in the new water, the new power. The fire protection in the overall project. There's been a series of negotiations with the New Jersey Historic Trust, who was very concerned about restoring the building. Preservation is typically worshiped kind of the exterior of the building. And they make us put insulation on the interior side, which would destroy the interior of the barn. So after many, many discussions with them. I've convinced them that the right way to do it is to put some foam insulation on top of the old siding boards and then put new siding boards. On the outside of that. So the whole building will grow by four, six inches in width. We do a similar thing with the roof where the old slate is well past its hundred-year lifespan. There's lots of holes in the roof now. And the slate roof needs to be removed, repair the board sheathing. And we'd actually overframe a new two-by-ten structure on top of the barn and a new slate roof on top of that with, with proper insulation. So the whole building will get a few inches wider and a foot or so taller. I'll know it and a few other people will know it. And I'm trying to make it as concealed as possible so that the public actually knows the building's a little larger. But then it will be insulated. We don't have to worry about sprinkler pipes freezing and we can use the building all four seasons. It also needs heating and cooling. Systems we put into place. So we have a pretty comprehensive package to address all those things and I can go through the plans in great detail if you'd like. But, but that's the, the big overview. The, um. The ground level at the, at the courtyard level. Was renovated by the Devois brothers in the forties for a dairy operation and they got out of the horse operation. And the floors are at four different levels with the concrete manure troughs and, and things like that. That hall has to be leveled off for, for humans as opposed to for cattle. So we need to, to excavate out actually the ground floor and put in a, a level concrete slab. But that, once that's done, it'll be a really nice event space on the ground level, only about eight feet high, not very, not very tall. Kind of whitewashed as it was in the days when it was a dairy. And then upstairs is the, the barn itself, which has the wood timbers, the wood floor, the wood walls, the wood roof. And there's the great big sliding barn door. If there now, that would be filled with glass and that would become the main entrance to the upper level. So you park at the farmer's market and you look, look towards the east, towards the barn, the great big sliding doors. Kind of permanently left open such that you can look into the interior from the outside. Cupolas come down, go back on the top, lightning rods come down, go back up on the top. Everything's overseen by the historians.
So this, this project is actually necessary in order to preserve the barn structure as it is now, correct?
Correct. So the preservation goal is to preserve the structure of the barn itself and to preserve as much of the material as possible. So that the siding boards, which are deteriorating now in the, in the rain, wax would be, we'll leave them in place, we'll clean them up. And put new siding over the top of them. So we're trying to preserve as much as possible of the historic fabric that's there. The period of significance cuts off at nineteen forty, so there are certain elements that happened in the early. Earlier in the forties and the, and the fifties, there's a cattle shoot. That's, that's off on the corner by the wagon house, you know, the restored wagon houses. Next up, there's kind of a ruinous section of the building. That was put up after the period of significance, so we're okay with this historic folks to take that away. Adjacent to that is a pretty ruinous section on the north side, which we would knock down. And that's where I'm gonna put my, my fire stair and lift, because it's not in the barn itself. So the, the, the pure part of the barn will be restored as the barn. And some of this modern vertical circulation will happen in a fifteen-foot zone. It's, that's pretty ruinous right now. There's a lot of lofts that were added, so a lot of the lofts actually will come out because they were, again, they were kind of added with two-by-fours and two-by-tens. One of the century stuffs that, that we don't want. And the building code allows me to have one-third of the loft. Right now it's about two-thirds loft. So we will reduce the lofts and restructure those to open up the interior a bit more.
The, the whole goal here is both for preservation, but also for having the educational space. And the ability to have an event space to fund all these improvements.
Correct. So I do a lot of preservation adjacent work. I do a lot of adaptive reuse. Buildings need to. Earn their way in the modern world. If, if the building has no use, it's just for preserving something that's beautiful and it's, it's just a museum and you put the tin can out front to collect some money. The building's gonna fall down. It needs to have a, a purpose. It needs to, to work. It needs to be productive. So, right. So the other one goal is preserve the artifact. The other goal is to serve the organization. By giving them something that, that they can use on a daily basis. And, and I would love the building to be used every single day of the year. There was some talk about doing a halfway insulation job, a little bit of insulation, not too much, and doing a little bit of heat, but not too much, but that to me makes absolutely no sense. The building really needs to, a nasty day like today, you need to be able to go in the building, be warm and comfortable and be able to use it. I think that serves. The building and it serves the organization. The best.
And, and ultimately those site plan issues that come up where we're going to do parking lot improvements and stormwater. And changing the ingress and egress. Signage for, for that, if that comes into place. We know that we have to come back to the board for all of those issues, correct?
Yeah, yeah, I would assume so, obviously.
Questions from the board? Mr. Pickle?
Could you clarify on, maybe using sheet A one? Where the demolition you spoke about? I couldn't quite follow that.
A whole demolition plan that's not, not in this package. If you look at the A one point one in the center bottom. There's two little circles that are section marks. In, in that zone there, and you see it says silo ruin. So the silo ruin right now, if you look at the, at the building. There's a gambrel roof over that. In, in the nineteen thirties photos, there was a silo in that location adjacent to the main big doors to the barn, the ramp that goes up to the big doors. To the left of that, there was a silo. That silo fell down. I don't know. Right now, there's a little roof over it. Adjacent to that and coming out further forward to the west is a large. Chunk of horrible stuff that we call the cattle shoot, where they took the cows and led them up. On a chute to load them on the trucks and take them away other places. That section is all determined by the historians to be non-historic. It's in terrible condition and it will go away. So that's, that's kind of the exterior demolition. Behind that. If you look on this drawing, there's a staircase and a lift. The zones about fifteen feet by thirty-four feet. This zone here. Is also kind of terribly constructed. I can do better on the weekend. And it's, it's, it's just, it's a big roll-up overhead garage door. There's a whole series of doors in there. And it's, it's all rotting and falling apart. And that, that's what we propose to demolish that section as well. It's also not historic. And that's where I can build my stair and my handicap lift to get people up to the upper part of the barn. But not actually cut those elevator, so lift, not elevator. You don't have to cut those things into the structure of the barn itself. I can leave them in this zone. Independent of the barn structure. It's beyond the stone wall where the barn used to end in the eighteen hundreds. That's really the exterior demolition. We're leaving a lot of the other pieces. There's, there's two little odd pertinent scissors, a little tool shed up at the. Further to the right on the drawing, further to the south. That's, we're gonna leave that there. And there's a little milkhouse that sits in the courtyard. We're gonna leave that. The north L is the section that runs east-west on the north side of the U. That were largely living intact. I need to take some of the interior of that and, and reconfigure that for, for some toilets. And I'm actually putting a firewall through there so that we can put fire sprinklers in the main barn itself. And not put any fire sprinklers. Under the building code, it'll be two different buildings. I don't have to put fire sprinklers in the whole east L in the garage, which is just being left to be storage. The next generation can worry about what to do with that part of the building. Does that clarify the demolition?
Yeah. Is any of the courtyard area gonna have disturbance?
The courtyard will have some walkways put through it. But that's, no, we're not doing any structure in there. There's a need for a service entrance for loading. So on the far. East side of the courtyard, there's a bit of a gravel path that goes to a series of stall doors in the east L. We'll improve that. Put a little more gravel down, make it a little more of a, a place that you can drive a van up to load into the building. So I am cutting doors into the northeast corner of the L. As a service door. And then we have a, a paved path that would come through for handicapped access through, through the courtyard. The other improvement that we're. We've sold to the historic people, I think. Until we get the final review, a lot of barns used to have what's called a foray bay. They had a recessed area. That the barn jutted out a bit and there's a re, four or six-foot recess where there's a series of stall doors. So we'd like to do that on the. On the west side of the courtyard, on the east side of the barn, give a little bit of a sheltered area onto that courtyard. And that would be one of the public accesses into the ground level. So the courtyard was never grassy. When this was a barn, the courtyard was beaten earth and full of machines and animals and all kinds of things. Now it's this lovely green oasis. So I think we'd like to keep it open and green, but we do functionally need a few things to go through.
Did your full set of plans have soil erosion and sediment control plan?
There's, there's, there's a whole set of civil engineering. Yes. Yeah. They're involved more in, in these things. I just was discussing, there's a civil engineer involved. With the parking lot and with soil erosion and with all those kind of things. There's archaeological interest if we were to start digging around. There's all kinds of people looking at this. So.
That would be, those type of things would be when we come back before the board.
Correct, correct. And, and because we're not explaining the footprint of the building, we're not into archaeology with, with the part that I understand.
But if you're removing structures and buildings, you're causing soil disturbance which triggers the soil erosion and sediment control.
If we're.
Ten thousand square feet?
I, I am removing. A few hundred square feet. And I'm, well, this paving I'm talking about is probably stage three.
Yeah.
It's not actually strictly necessary for what we're talking about now, but, but what I've described is less than ten thousand square feet on the surface. We could do some calculations and show that.
I'm just struggling because normally the fire company and the fire marshal would advise the board if the. Sprinkling system and the fire truck can access the site if there's a fire. And because we're not getting site plan. Those are the kind of details that it's, I'm just struggling with. How do we deal with it?
It's an unconventional project.
Yeah, I know.
It's historical nature.
Well, it, yeah, it, because of the phasing as much as anything.
Yeah, because we have to approach it that way.
Our architect, you know, we're, we're giving you the overview, but all of those architectural plans. Are going to have to be submitted for building permits and approval. They're going to be reviewed by your, your construction office. So. All the details of fire safety and ingress and egress and all those building requirements, Mr. Pickle's gonna have to.
We, yeah, we, we, we met two months ago with, with the construction department, who were absolutely wonderful. Hit three of them for an hour and it was very productive. We walked through the whole project with them. I think for stage one, we're doing structural repairs to the timber frame. We're doing the siding and the roofing. We're doing the windows and doors. We're securing the shell of the building. To keep the rain, which is actively coming in today, out of the building. So, so the stage one is just purely. We would do this minor demolition work. We would do structural repairs with a specialist timber framer, and we would do the roofing and the siding and doors and windows. And then we're done. And then we have a shell, which the building department won't let us have the public in until we do the further work. But we would have to get approval from them, obviously, to get a construction permit, just to do that work. Go back to them for a construction permit for phase, for stage two, the rest of the work. But we want to keep them fully informed, which is why we met with them already, about what our ultimate goal is. And they were, as I said, they're very helpful, and they're very willing to be engaged at a before we make any formal submission to them. They gave us good feedback.
So as with us, you talked, you spoke with them about more than just this first phase.
We talked about the entire project.
About tonight is that first phase.
Yeah, right, that that first stage, correct. We we described to them the whole project because they they always want to know the whole project. And we made no, and there's no formal submission to them yet. This is just an informal discussion.
I find it very interesting.
Just so I can just clarify how this was scheduled, there was obviously an intent to discuss phase one and with the application in possibly phase two, but I think there's a lot being discussed, but the intent was just for just for phase one, because there isn't, wasn't a lot of information that was provided. That's why they were waivered, but when they first applied, it was always intended for stage one.
But now they're adding one and two.
Well, I I will say that we applied for stage one and stage two. And Mr. Bacarella has raised an issue whether it should be just stage one, but we applied for stage one and stage two to be able to do the utility improvements, too. And may maybe it's something that, you know, we we need to do the septic and we need to do the public water, but we could do that anyhow if we wanted to without site plan approval, which is, I guess, why we were kind of wanting to move forward on stage two. So if maybe it's if you have proved the ability to do those things by site plan waiver for stage one and stage two, but recognizing that we have to come back for site plan approval for the the rest of it.
I think the disconnect is the fact that they were saying they want to start using the facility without a site plan review. I understand you're improving everything, like you're fixing the shell, but then you want approval to basically start using it to make the money to pay for the next stage. But we're missing like, like, there's a reason, it's not just site plan improvements. There's other reviews that go, like, other things we look at, fire, access, egress, all kinds of stuff. So I I feel like that's where our hangup is.
Yeah.
Like, I understand you want to make the structure work, which I completely agree with. But to use the structure now, you need the whole package.
To use the structure, to me, says that you need the warming kitchen and you need the restrooms. And if you have the restrooms, then and you need the sprinkler system, and you need upgraded electric, and you need the upgraded septic system to handle the restrooms. It starts to snowball.
Yeah, I have no problem with fixing the structure, making it so it's able to withstand, so we can start fixing it. So phase one, I'm completely on board, saying, yeah. But without a review of the entire site and how it's going to work, you can't really say, yeah, go ahead and throw people in there.
Is it your intent to use the indoor facility after phase one, which is limited to structural improvement?
Yes, but here, that that was before I started hearing you guys pushing back on it. So here's here's what maybe I can suggest. If we could obtain site plan waiver for stage one and stage two in order to be able to start moving on with some of those improvements, like the septic and water and some of those interior improvements, but agree that no certificate of occupancy to be able to use the indoor would be granted until we come back here for site plan approval. And that would probably, we would apply for minor site plan approval, but that way we can address some of those issues in greater detail on and have a more formal review. But it allows us to do those improvements, I think, that are really interior and protects the board because you're not allowing the use yet to start until we come back before you want to form the site plan.
Well, a little while ago, you were saying you didn't need our approval for the septic and water connections. So how come you can't just do phase one in that part if you don't need our approval for it? And then come back for sick phase two and the rest.
Because we want to be able to get building permits for the interior improvements, but we're agreeing not to get the certificate of occupancy, and we wouldn't be able to get a certificate of occupancy until such time as we start site plan, come back for site plan approval.
Yeah, but you're asking for building permits for interior changes for stuff that hasn't been reviewed. So that doesn't really work.
Well.
Because it would have to be reviewed in the whole encompassing how everything works together, not just individual pieces.
I think we've submitted it by way of the architectural plans about what is going on in site.
Okay, but there's no fire review. There's no, like, there's a lot missing when it comes to people going to be able to use a space. So I'm trying to tell you, like, take everything without that part and get the approval so you can fix your building so that it's not deteriorating further. So I don't think any of us are comfortable saying, yeah, go ahead and just start doing those. We'll check them later. That's not really how it works.
How about? What you're saying, stage one, we do the the demo and the exterior and improvements to make it structurally sound. And then for stage two and stage three, we'll come back and first site plan.
And I would suggest, it sounds like major site plan approval. We we are, I I would suggest, and I think it sounds like major site plan approval. I think the board, and I don't want to put words in the mouth of my board members, I I think they're beginning to grow weary of the amount of what are called minor site plan approvals that are being, and I'm not just referencing your clients, Mr. Brumberg, but minor site plan approvals for what are really, under all other circumstances, major site plan approvals. And we're getting a lot of minor site plan waivers, which I I can tell based upon my experience representing both boards and and developers, which are rather unusual in nature and usually for very de minimis things. So if any of the board members feel like misstated that philosophy, then they certainly can can pipe up now, so.
I I'm just, I'm just gonna, I can't commit to coming in for major site plan approval because if we qualify for minor site plan approval, we're going to want to come in for minor site plan approval. And I'm just going to put it right out there. One of the major reasons is for a major site plan approval is often a bond that has to be put in place for the improvements, and that makes it very difficult for this nonprofit to do it as.
Although although the the bond requirements now with the legislation of a few years ago are are much less.
Less, but it's still from what our research and
there's 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 a reason for bonding requirements. I'm just saying you could apply any way you want. I just don't want someone to say later, you didn't give us what the board, what should be done. It's it's obviously a very beneficial project to the community. I think the concerns of board members are that that the use by the public be, you know, in accordance with with public health and and safety in in utmost mind, including traffic and parking and circulation and stormwater. We're seeing a lot of applications lately, one which has been bounced tonight, that are submitting deficient stormwater plans and kind of saying, let us do it later, after it's been approved, and we'll work with with township staff and the construction and and building folks. And there's a lot of concern by board members about stormwater management and and design. So kind of being a little more, the board's always, I don't want to say we've been lax, but we've really tried to work with developers, and we don't want to get a reputation. You just come in here with applications that are kind of, yeah. Am I getting that right?
I guess, very well said.
See, just one subtle ones to say.
I just want to say that this is a, the entire project, all three stages, is almost an eight-million-dollar project, and for us, that's very large. And we have, we have, I just want you to know, we have done our homework. We have got, we have a civil engineer that's been on the design team from day one. We have archaeologists. We have mechanical engineers. We have electrical people. So I just don't want you to think that we're doing shortcuts or that we would in any way want to endanger the safety of of the public. But we are, we're approaching you, hoping that you could work with us just because of the financial constraints that the bonds would put on us if we had to do a full site plan. I wanted to come to you to tell you about this project before, we could have done this first part probably with building permits, but I didn't want to do that because this is a big project, and there's been a lot going on for many years. And I wanted you all to see the whole thing, and that's why we're here. So anything you can do to help us, I would appreciate it. That's all. I appreciate your concerns.
And I I think if we're allowed to proceed forward with stage one on a site plan waiver, that would be great. We we would come back before the board, probably on a minor site plan application for the rest of it. And we'll deal with those issues at that time.
Right, we can address that at that time.
Or you might request a technical review committee meeting first to kind of go through with professionals and get some feedback before.
We've already met with the township professionals on this application.
No, this is different.
Review committee.
And at that time, you're proposing a preliminary and final second.
Right, and that's why we pulled it back. Right. If we can, I mean, we're going to take a look at it because, quite honestly, it was the bonding requirement that that was a major concern.
I may be speaking on.
But what are you, what are you, what are you looking to bond?
Well, it, I I don't want to get back to, I think we've done enough for tonight to be able to get the site plan waiver application for stage one that we described. And then, you know, we're happy to meet with the township's professionals, the board's professionals, to hash out the next stage where we, and how we present that, because initially, we planned the full build out as a preliminary and final. And if we're staging that back, maybe that is just a minor.
As the mayor said earlier, this this is a unique project. What you do is important in the community. I don't, I I think I can speak for everyone here. We want to be very, very supportive. But there's rules, too. So that's, sorry if it sounds like grilling. It's really not intended to be. It's still intended to be supportive. But there are rules.
I understand.
But I think through, in my opinion, and I'll throw it out to anybody else, I I think that through this dialogue where we've ended up tonight is potential motion to approve that phase one.
Yeah.
And
let me, let me ask, that's where I am. Let me ask, by the way, have we, I lost track. Have we asked if members of the public have questions of the architect or?
No, we didn't. We started just with our own questions.
So let's do that. It's, there's any, there's nobody online, so I don't have to do that. If there's anyone here this evening who has some questions of Mr. Pickle. It's one of it's the architect.
And and Mr. Brumberg, are you done with your presentation?
I am. I I I don't have to give.
So if they're likewise, just as we're making a a record, if there's any members of the public either online or here tonight that wish to offer general testimony concerning the application, now now is your time to come forward. I I see someone actually raising their hand, so why did we ask that? No, you know, you you actually have to, yes, you get to come up and identify your name and address.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Aishen. I'm, excuse me, I'm 108 Catherine Street, Leffler Township. Excuse me. I just want to say.
Since you're going to offer testimony, the municipal land use law, silly as it may seem, requires that I have to swear you, you in. So do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth or otherwise affirm in connection with your testimony before the board tonight?
I do.
You are sworn.
Thank you. Just a little background for me. I moved into Raritan Township in nineteen eighty-five. And in the nineties, I got together with Citizens for Parkland, and I'm one of the members that had tried to save the Duport Farm. I can tell you that working with the Hundred and Land Trust, I I've been on, so we've had so many meetings. We've, I've seen so many master plans. I've seen so many reviews. How are we doing with our master plan? Their attention to detail is tremendous. They're not going to screw you over. They're trying to do what's right for the community. And I just hope that you let them do this. I'm just a volunteer, so I'm not getting paid. I see the value. When you go to the farmer's market, it's wonderful. When Chris does a presentation and talks about the architectural history of the buildings, it's wonderful. Adults are coming, children is coming. It's such a great resource for our community. And to not move forward on this, it's just a shame. Price of everything is going up. You all know this. You know, running the township, everything is going up. They're not trying to cut corners, for sure. I'm the neighbor. I see what they do. I see how they're working really hard to preserve stuff. So I just hope that you grant what they would like. And my tax dollars at work, I support them. So when they come to the Raritan Township asking for some funds, give it to them.
And we have.
Thank you. We we should throw it out to our professionals, too, for me. All right, Jeff, you had you had prepared your letter on this.
I think everybody that's part of the only thing that I'm questioning that accepted and utilities, maybe the information provided before the PRTB.
Just again, for the record, the memorandum that Mr. Bacarella is speaking to is a memorandum issued to the Raritan Township Planning Board that's dated February twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. It's a planner review letter, and essentially, it consists of of two pages. I I think I swore him in the beginning, both witnesses got up and raised their hand.
That's correct.
But that's good of you to call that to our attention, because sometimes we do forget to do that.
We did two at once.
We did two at once.
All right, just one.
No, thank you. Doesn't hurt. Thank you.
I think what we're hearing is we don't have enough information in what we're provided this evening to really move into a phase two or phase three discussion, while it's beautiful and we're excited as well. We want to help put it in the land trust to move forward on this project in any way that we can procedurally and properly. But it's sounding as though we're really discussing about potentially moving forward with phase one that this evening, like, hearing first.
Mr. Brumberg, did you want to sum up and and offer what you would suggest the board should adopt in a way of approval tonight, so you codify it for for the record, so that when someone makes a a motion one way or the other, we we actually definitively, now that we've had back and forth, know what you're looking for?
Sure. Based upon the conversations that we've had this evening, we would request a site plan waiver to do stage one of our our improvements, which would include to preserve the structural and historical elements of the barn for future generations, which would be structural repairs, removal of the nonhistoric elements and asbestos, new roof, siding and insulation, framing of the circulation area, windows, exterior doors. We do recognize that.
We do recognize that the future work, including site utilities and the interior fit out of the barn and any site improvements will require further relief from the board. We think we qualify for a site plan waiver based upon the ordinance sections that I cited, which are section 296 dash 45A, B and C, because we did show that we secured previous site plan approval and what we're proposing here has an insignificant impact. And B is it's a normal repair, maintenance or replacement such as a new roof, painting, siding. And C, we're not affecting existing circulation drainage or building arrangements, lighting and those type of issues with this stage one. And we would ask for that.
And I think lastly, the applicant had agreed that if the board were so inclined to grant site plan waiver for phase one, the applicant would not apply for either a, a temporary or a permanent certificate of occupancy until a further submission to this board of either a minor or major site plan approval. Would that be correct, Mr. Gruber?
For, for that.
For phase one.
Yes.
I mean, anyway, I don't know if the board's going to agree with that or not, but I thought that's what I heard.
Yeah, I think that was when I was trying to get stage two. Yeah. Okay.
All right, that's essentially.
Okay.
The request for a, a, a motion one way or the other.
Can I just, before we move on to a motion, I would just like to say that as with several other members of the board, I think this is a wonderful project and it will be a great benefit to the community and I would like to commend you for all of the very hard work you have done so far. And our, my reluctance to go beyond phase one should not be taken as a reflection on your efforts or, or as indicating any doubt as to your integrity and going forward. It's simply that we have due diligence that we have to do. But I certainly will commit to working with the land trust and I'm sure other members of the board feel the same way. Thank you.
Very well said.
I want to second that, you know. You know, this project's something that, you know, our communities looked forward to for years. And I guess I would say we are inviting you to come for the technical review committee, which is members of the board and our professionals. And I would think we might want to include our attorney in that because we may be able to think of some ways forward.
Great, thank you.
So I think that's something that I really encourage you to do.
We will do that.
With, with the solicitor's recommended motion, I'm a little nervous about putting number A in where they secured previous site plan approval because that was just so they could use the house for an office and really is unrelated to this proposal that's before us. So, you know. I, I would like to put forth his recommendation without that A if we, if you.
No, I think, I think the board, if it decides that they want to waive the requirement of site plan approval, can, can really do so when it looks at it under either A, B or C.
Yeah.
So you're.
It seems like B is normal maintenance, repair, replacement is really the strongest rational nexus to what we were proposing.
So, so I, I, I think I, I hear essentially that the vice chairwoman has made a, a somewhat amendment to the resolution to indicate that if, if the board is so inclined to grant site plan waiver, it would be pursuant to the criteria in section 296 dash 45 capital B period involving normal repair, maintenance or replacement such as a new roof, painting, new siding or similar action.
Yes.
Agree.
There's a motion to approve the site plan waiver? As just outlined?
Second.
Chairman, Mr. Edward Giddings.
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews.
Yes.
Ms. Robin Fatu.
Yes.
Mr. Scott McDate.
Yes.
Ms. Lisa Fania.
Yes.
Ms. Judy D. John Domenico.
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Cavacchieri.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate your thoughtful comments and encouragement for coming back before the board and we will definitely discuss the PRC coming back to meet with you. Looking forward to doing so.
Good luck with it.
Thank you, Mr. Gruber.
It's not that I doubt their expertise. We're supposed to do it. I'm sure your experts are great, but. Thank you. Yes, I want to see this done, but I want to see the incredibly correct way. Here you go.
No, they weren't marked, they weren't marked with exhibits because they were all submitted. They weren't, they weren't modified.
I wasn't given the time to go.
That's funny.
I saw you.
That turned out well.
Yeah.
I know, there's always been battles, but it's probably. Sure, you got a short talk.
I live in a township, Dylan.
Yep, I'll see you later. Yeah, take care.
Yes.
Yeah, it's the, yeah. That was approved. We wanted the, yeah, we wanted.
I'm noticing. Single road. You had an answer. So this is.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's.
It's him. Put it, put it first. It's the same.
All right down.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, we worked that out some time. Sorry about how the truck was going to.
He might test the spike. He might. Okay.
Thanks.
Don't, yeah, don't worry.
Okay, we're good to move forward, Mr. Gruber. The next item up is Santana Dharma Foundation.
Yes, thank you. Council for Santana Dharma Foundation. The board might recall that we previously secured preliminary and final site plan approval and amended preliminary and final site plan approval to permit the construction of a house of worship in the form of a Hindu temple with priest house and customarily incidental uses. That project is well on its way and is almost done, if not done. But there, it does require a, a couple of things that we came before the board this evening for minor site plan approval for the construction of a new entrance gate, a covered composting pad and a shoe closet additions to the front of the building. And one issue that just came up last night from Mr. Vacarella's report was a concrete walkway that was installed apparently from the site to lot 38, which is a residential building on 16 Barley Sheep Road. I just want to indicate to the board that that property is not owned by Santana Dharma Foundation. It's owned, it's a single family residence owned by, I'm going to try, Badri Ramana Thon, who is a member of, of Santana Dharma Foundation, but it's used as a single family resident. Used, the concrete path is just to be able to provide access from that residence to the, the Hindu temple rather than having to walk along the roadway or along the berm. So it, it's not part of this application other than the concrete walkway going there. And that property is a single family residence. It's not tax exempt. It's not owned by the temple. It's taxed as a single family residence and will continue to do so. And the Hindu temple itself doesn't have any involvement with respect to that. This evening I have Mr. Ruth Narain to provide testimony and maybe Arthi Surianarian on from the Hindu temple if we need her testimony as well, but maybe we just.
Well, it's just, that's where, um.
Okay. And if. So Mr. Ruth Narain, can I stand?
Do you swear to tell the truth or otherwise affirm in the whole truth, nothing but the truth in connection with your testimony tonight, sir?
Yes.
You're sworn.
I presented Mr. Ruth Narain's testimony before this board as an expert engineer. I'm qualified, I'm qualified, so it would be accepted.
We remember him. Welcome back.
Thank you. Eric, why don't you talk about our minor site plan proposal and reflect on the board negate compost concrete pad, shoe closet additions and that walkway?
Certainly. Um, so as Mr. Gruber indicated, this application has been before the board a couple of times and I don't know how many of the board members may have had a chance to take a look at the property, but we are virtually done with all of the site work. All of the stormwater management systems have been installed, inspected and approved by the town. The entire parking lot is paved, all of the curbing, all of the drainage. There's only a couple of things remaining and it's primarily surrounds the temple building. That is the front entryway from the parking lot into the building. And then there's a rear patio area, all of which were approved previously by the board. Those basically have to be completed and they haven't been completed at this point because we're still trying to get the outside part of the building done. And then once that's done, the patio and the walkways are essentially going to be the final elements of the project in terms of site work that needs to be done. But what we are here for tonight is, as Steve indicated, a couple of things. What the foundation would like to do is, and we've already received a zoning permit for installation of a fence along the frontage of the property with Barley Sheep Road. In addition to that fence, what we would like to do is to add two wing walls to the entrance coming into the property and at the end of the wing wall have a swing gate, essentially two gates that'll swing inwards towards the property to secure the property. Primarily the reason for that gated entrance is that we've had over the past several years, I think it could be patrons that are just driving by pulling into the property and at times the foundation is not certain what, what's happening. So they would like to at least provide some sort of a barrier to prevent people from just arbitrarily driving in and driving around and then leaving the property. Certainly emergency services will have access to the gate. Aside from that gate, there are other parts of the property along Barley Sheep Road that remains open. So for instance, the emergency access that we have, which is a little bit to the north of the main entrance, that will still remain open. That's not proposed to be gated. It's, the gate primarily is just going to provide a barrier at the main driveway where people would normally drive in to and out during normal operations of the facility, the gate will remain open. There's no plan to have the gate keyed or require any sort of code for entry. During the regular hours, that was presented to the board previously as a part of the application, the site will remain fully open to everyone. It's only when activities are finished for the day or for the evening, that's when the gate will be closed. So that's one aspect of the application that we're here for. Secondly, the applicant is looking to build a composting pad and on the plan that I have mounted, the area to, in front of the priest quarters, which is a smaller building.
Why don't, why don't we do as we did with the last application rather than saying the plan we have now? Initial dates and revision dates, just so we have that in the transcript.
So this plan is titled Minor Site Plan Prepared for Block 40.04, Lot 37, and the plan date is January 23rd, 2023. No revisions.
Thank you.
Welcome. So what's shown on this minor site plan is in this circular area here that shaded, which is located towards the north side of the property and along the eastern portion of the, what we call the priest quarter or the study hall building. This is where the applicant is looking to construct a composting pad. And essentially what we're looking to compost is a lot of the flowers and milk and things of that nature that's used in the worship ritual. Instead of throwing those items out, they would like to compost it and reuse it. So in order to provide an area where that type of work can occur and where the composting can, where we can actually place the composting bin at this point, what we would like to do is to build a pad to the north of that existing parking area. The pad is not going to impact the parking area, it's not going to remove parking from the site. It just provides a location where the applicant can actually put the composting bin in order to have all of the worship interiors that would normally be discarded placed in the bin for composting. In addition to that, we're proposing to actually have a canopy covering the composting area and. I think Mr. Gruber has a copy of what we're looking for in terms of the canopy. I have more.
I'll do this one first, actually this one first.
So we're calling that A1. Oh, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
And that is the canopy that we're looking to install. It, on top of the concrete pad, it, the four posts will attach to the pad and that's how it's secured to the concrete pad. And the final item that we're actually looking to seek approval from the board tonight is at the front of the building. Right now, the present entrance of the building is projected forward and on the two sides there are essentially two indentations. They're about almost nine feet deep from the front of the building. What the applicant is proposing to do on both sides of the main entrance is to enclose that portion of the building and make it a part of the main building. The finish on the outside will be the same as the current temple building. The same ornamentation will continue around to that portion of the building. And those two enclosures on either side, they're going to be about 14 feet wide, almost nine feet deep. And the access will be to those two. And the access will be to those two proposed shoe closets, as we're calling them, will be from the inside of the temple. Once you enter into the building, you can go either left or right in order to enter those two shoe closets. And primarily what they're for is worshippers coming to the temple typically with most Hindu functions, you are not, you don't really want to wear your shoes in the facility. So it gives them a place where they can go take their shoes off and then enter into the temple. And then as they're leaving, they can take their shoes, put them back on in the facility. Those two additions are adding square footage, floor area to the building, but the current conditions on this site and what the applicant is proposing in terms of the increase in floor area, we are still significantly below what's permitted by the ordinance. And again, we're building within an area that was previously proposed to be patio, so we're not actually increasing the impervious coverage as a result of what the applicant is proposing.
So the only impervious coverage that we're adding is the concrete pad, correct?
Correct.
And the concrete sidewalk to lot 16, which wasn't previously approved by the board, correct?
Correct.
And the addition of that impervious coverage, does that trigger any additional stormwater requirements?
No, because originally, when we were here about six years ago for preliminary and final major site plan approval, the original stormwater design actually anticipated the potential for additional impervious coverage. So we actually built into the analysis, I believe it was about a half of an acre of additional coverage that the applicant could add to the property without having to modify or retrofit the existing detention basin. That report that was originally prepared and designed at the basis on file with the town, but we can certainly provide copies tomorrow if necessary.
So we have a couple of reports from the board's professionals. The first is Mr. Ferrero's report of February 6, 2023. And number one, this indicates the survey must be submitted for the board's records. We'll do that, correct?
Correct.
Number two, the scope of the project should be clarified in terms of proposed patios. I think we provided that testimony as to the things that were actually previously approved and what is now the new things that are being proposed. But we'll clarify that on the plans. Number three, we'll fix that label that, not the gate detail that says see detail for composting bin or pad. That'll be fixed. Number four, the recommendation that emergency services comment on the location and configuration of the gates. We haven't received anything from emergency services on that. But, and that's it for Mr. Ferrero's report.
You have not seen a letter dated February the 4th, 2023, from Dennis Concanon?
Uh-huh.
Dennis Concanon, C-O-N-C-A-N.
No, I have not.
He's a fire marshal.
I have not seen that. I'm sorry?
We have it.
I don't.
He has two quick points.
Briefly.
We'll send to you.
It was attached with... We're happy to do that. Yeah, we can do that. I'm sorry, I stopped at page three for Jeff's report. I didn't see that. So now I see it's attached to his report.
I made the same error.
I go to very truly yours, and then I'm done. So going to Mr. Vacarella's February 6 report.
If I could just jump in before you do that, if you don't mind, I'm sorry. The, one clarification on the fence and the gate improvements. Eric, you mentioned that the emergency access driveway would remain open?
Correct.
The plan doesn't really clearly show the limits of the proposed fence. It looks like the proposed fence, as it comes down off that site triangle, might approach some of that drive.
So we actually, it stopped, stopped short of the emergency access.
Okay.
Your proposal to actually approach it to block that drive at all.
Okay, so the fence doesn't actually provide a complete cordon barrier around the property. It just stops short of that driveway, so that remains open to the access. That's right, correct? Okay, thank you. And the canopy proposed, what's the height on it?
Nine feet.
Not lighted or anything, right?
No. I can give you a sample one if you want, but I mean, that's pretty much... That's all.
So the area where the composting pad is going is pretty steep.
Yes.
So how are you going to deal with...
The grade.
The grade and the slope and what's going to be built around to stabilize it and all that stuff?
So it's essentially with the pad in that particular area, what we could do is, because it drains down or it slopes down towards the detention basin, besides, we could build either one of two things. Either, depending upon how we, the final detail for the pad is worked out, either support the pads on individual sonotubes at the corners, or we could build a perimeter wall along the base of the pad so that the pad itself will be level. It will not change any of the grades into the basin. But those are the two options we have to support it. We haven't quite worked out which one we may want to use at this point.
So those details would be provided to the engineer and included on revised site plan?
Yes.
Along with the canopy?
Correct.
And how is the compost bin accessed? There's curving. How do you act, just walk over the curve onto the pad? How is that accessed? Like, how do you access the compost bin?
So the pad is up to, within, basically up to the curb. So as you walk up to it, there's no special access that's required. The bins are there, and then you can place the material in the bins.
And how does the compost bin work? Is it, is there, is it electric? Do you just...
Right now, the applicant's proposing just those regular Home Depot bins that you buy that I have in my vegetable garden. There may be a more formal composting unit that can go in there, but they're very, very expensive. So right now, it's just enclosed.
Bins that you...
And you spin them around.
Thank you.
One other clarification, the site map shows electric charging stations, which I didn't think we had approved in the last application.
So at that time, no, but we were making provisions just because, I guess, we had a little bit of foresight at the time, that we were actually, as a part of the site work, there were some conduits to relate, just in the event that we wanted to put those charging stations in, that we would have the ability to do it.
So this is, so that, that seems like it's probably another pretty major revision that needs to show up on the plans that shows the conduit and the electric that was run for those?
So...
Because it wasn't approved, and we need permits for charging stations.
So I don't know the particulars about the permits, but what I do know is all of the conduits and all of the excavations for any of the underground utilities, they went through the appropriate process for inspections before they were backfilling. We paved over it. But as typical with virtually any site that we normally do, once you have the property open up, if you anticipate future needs, we generally try to lay those things so that, obviously, if we were to try to do it now when the site is done, we ought to have to dig back up or trench or drill under.
My only question is, now that you're putting a compost pad there and you, right where the poles are sticking up out of the ground already, how's that going to work?
I would add also that you would want to make sure that, you know, whatever compost material is deposited there, maybe it's, is it placed directly into the bins, some sort of limitation on placement of how much can be put there because it's a lot of, a lot of material gets stockpiled there, there's a potential risk for it to potentially leach into the stormwater management basin. And I think you'd want to be concerned that, that area, you know, those types of areas tend to get, they tend to grow in size on controls. We won't, I would recommend the board consider some controls on making sure that everything placed there.
I would just be hesitant because that seems to me that it might be impinging upon a religious worship element, and I'm not sure we want to go there.
No, and I'm not suggesting we go there too, but I do want to make sure that there are protections on the stormwater basin so that we don't end up with a lot of debris going into the basin and a maintenance problem there.
So to Ms. Drew's comment then, are, what are you planning to do with the electrical that was placed? It's also in photo number two from Mr. Vacarella's.
Were the appropriate permits and things pulled for them? Can you hear him, Jeff?
Nope, no permits were pulled.
Jeff, were the appropriate permits and things pulled for adding the electrical, electric vehicle charging stations?
No permits were pulled, and this backup revision of the pipeline.
So I think Mr. Vacarella's report indicates that we, the two EV stations are depicted near the compost facility and that we should update the parking requirements and zoning permit approvals required. We'd be happy to get that zoning permit approval for those EV station, those two parking spaces. I'm not sure how it's a, maybe I'm missing something, how it's a concern with respect to the compost area.
Well, you're going to have these two towers locking... Yeah, it's not very clear. Locking your compost pad. Do you need a truck to pick up the bin? Do you need, like, how are you going to get access to it? There's, you're putting it right behind your two electric vehicle things, like, it's not exactly convenient.
When you have the zoom in on this plan, it doesn't show that these are there, so it's hard for us to understand how that lays out literally.
I think it's fair to say that between the electric charging stations and, on one side, the potential electric charging stations on one side and the detention basin on the other, the proposed location of the compost pad is problematic.
Do you know the percentage of the slope in that area?
So going into the basement, I know it's less than three to one because typically with any, any sort of site grading, it's generally three to one maximum. And I think that area is probably four to one. I can verify it and put it on the plans, but I know it's going to be less than three to one. That's manmade. We created that as a part of the site work that we did.
Yes, at the board's discretion about granting those waivers.
And I'm just going to jump in because what we've been, what we've been talking about is a supplemental memorandum from Mr. Vacarella dated February 21, 2023. It's planner review number two. It consists of two pages, and it consists of three photographs. Photo one depicts the location of the proposed concrete pad oriented northwest. Photo two depicts the location of the proposed concrete pad oriented northeast. And photo three depicts a concrete walking path to lot 38, 16 Barley Sheaf Road. And Mr. Vacarella also has two paragraphs of comments. All right, so we're going to mark this. This is now going to be exhibit A1, which is the plan submitted noted previously.
I'm sorry, John, that would be A2.
Eight, eight two. I'm sorry, the canopy was A1. Eight, eight two.
I just want to make a note, there is one person online, but he is a witness for the applicant.
Thank you. The respect is given. I hadn't seen this. It's good discovery, too, you want, yesterday.
So it would be along the side of that one parking space.
Wait, wait. We've got a reporter here. She just, she's not going to be able to take all the back and forth, right? Okay, so what I, what I would just do is summarize it, that Mr. Grunberg has been showing the board by upgrading in front of us on exhibit A2, the location of the, the new composting area. And if the board is satisfied with that, there'll be a revision to a plan submitted.
I've objected a term for rating.
Well, I thought you looked good. I certainly grade a lot, and I never object myself, so...
So we're still on Mr. Vacarella's report, I think. And that's the February 6 one. And I think we addressed two, three, four, five. Oh, no, we didn't address five. The color of the fence, wing wall and gate.
So the plan for the fence and the wing wall is that the stone is going to match what's on the priest quarter, which is the white, the white stone is what we're planning. And then the fence color or the actual material that's made up the gate, that color's going to be more, or a tone probably black or on the darker brown side is what we're thinking right now. But definitely...
What type of fence? Is it going to be...
So right now, we're thinking about metal. Basically, the metal picket type fence, and the gate will be made out of the same type of material.
It's going to be made to look nice, not like a...
Not white vinyl.
We have regulations with fence height and front yard areas.
Number six, we recognize that it will need to be out of the township right of way in site easement and confirm the height of the fence and the wing wall because there's a berm on the front of the property. Where's the fence in relationship to the berm?
So the fence is certainly going to be on the applicant's property. It's not going to be in the right of way, but it's going to be on the base or the bottom of the berm because the berm is completely constructed on our property, and the fence is proposed to be within 12 inches of the right of way line.
Even with being located on the base of the berm, it's not going to fix the...
Yes.
We understand that signage on the wing wall is specifically prohibited, and then we're not proposing any, correct?
Correct. The only thing that the applicant is proposing on the wing wall is to have the address of the property, 14 Barley Sheaf. The address, the property address.
The 14 Barley Sheaf. I'm going to get to that wing wall address after... I'm gonna get to that wing wall address after we first do J. Never mind. That's part of the ordinance. So now we'll get to the wing wall address. On the front side of each structure, dimension shall be given, is there an alternative location for the address identification on site? Our proposal now is to only have one address, correct?
Correct.
So it'll only be one on the one instead of two.
So on the plans, I believe the demand, what we're looking at for the addresses, 12 inches high, 24 inches wide.
And I think we answered number nine about the status of the construction.
So has that area been built already?
So. The addition?
The shoe, the shoe addition.
No, no, we haven't done anything for the shoe addition yet.
I remember when we approved the plans for this, they were talking about the shoe closets that were within the plan already. What happened to those spaces? And why are they now being added to the outside? Because I remember in the explanation for how the space is used and everything, they went through where they would go to take your shoes off and store them and enter the temple. It was in the, within the plans that we approved. So how come they're now being added to the outside? As an addition.
So. Unfortunately, I do not recall that portion of our testimony on the applicant's behalf.
Yeah, honestly, that was, I'm glad you recall, I don't recall that. The shoes, specifically the shoes. But I, I think we're, we're talking about, what's the size of these areas?
So the new shoe closet that the applicant is requesting approval for is 30 feet wide and about nine feet deep.
Yeah, my question was just more of what changed inside that is now not there. But if you don't recall, you don't recall.
Yeah, really don't. But we're, we're still within the floor area ratio and it's not a substantial change to the, the site, I would argue. And that's Mr. Vacarella's February 6 report. And Mr. Vacarella, I think we touched about the concrete walkway to 16 Barley Sheaf and his pictures of the location of the concrete pad. It's a single family residence, it's not owned by the Hindu temple and it's used as a single family residence. People may stay there and visit the Hindu temple, but it's a single family residence tax like that. And there, there are people who stay there, Mr. Ramonathan owns it and stays there.
And they were responsible for constructing the concrete walkway?
On their property and.
It appears to be a little bit on your property.
Yeah, we, we did construct the concrete sidewalk on our property.
It just seemed like you were stating it was only over there and I'm like, well, clearly isn't because there's parking setback and it attaches to the parking lot, so.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I was saying it clearly is on, because originally it sounded as if you guys were saying that it was only on the other property. However, in the photo, you can see it touches the parking lot.
Oh, no.
It connects to the parking lot.
If I led you to believe that, that wasn't my intention. It was clearly a concrete sidewalk leading from the parking lot to lot, to 16 Barley Sheaf.
So a portion of it is on this property, this project?
Yes.
Which was not part, just for the clarity, it was not part of the original approval.
Correct.
It was not on that side.
For that as part of this site plan that Mr. Vacarella appropriately picked up. I wasn't aware that, that concrete sidewalk was there until 5:15 yesterday when I got his report.
You have to follow up with that resident as well?
Yes.
Are you comfortable with the stormwater management, the increase, or should we, as a condition of approval, ask you to look at it to make sure that it does meet?
I would recommend it be a condition of approval. I think the applicant had indicated they would provide us with the prior stormwater reports. And we would just like to verify that the, the contingency that was included in the original plan adequately covers these increases in impervious coverage. Happy to do that.
You know, one, one more comment on the, on the compost pad. The applicant had indicated they would, the detail would need to be updated on the plan for the location. I would also recommend a dimension and offset from the curb that defines the parking space now. Because with the pad being relocated to the side of the parking space with a canopy, you've gotta be worried about enough clearance for parking, you know, car doors, car door swings and things. We wanna make sure it's set off sufficiently. And I believe, is the grade, the grade's flatter in that area, correct?
Yeah, that part of the parking lot is flat, or the lawn area is flat.
We just wanted to set off enough so that you can still access it, but you don't have to worry about a car door hitting the post, the canopy.
I have nothing further for Mr. Rupner. They have the board questions? Professionals? We do not have anybody here in the room from the public. If there's somebody online and has a question on that testimony, please speak up. That's all I have. I think this is a, has been an attractive project for the township, for segment of the community, and I think it's very exciting that it's actually coming to fruition hopefully in a couple of months. And we would ask for you to favorably act on our application for minor site plan approval to approve those things subject to the conditions that we discussed.
We have a motion to approve the minor site plan for Santana Dharma Foundation for the construction of the new entrance gate, covered composting pad and new location and the shoe closets revision.
And the concrete sidewalk.
And the concrete sidewalk, thank you.
Still moved. Chairman, Mr. Edward Geddings?
Yes.
Vice Chairwoman, Ms. Donna Drews?
Yes.
Mayor, Ms. Robin Fatu? Mr. Scott McDate? Ms. Lisa Fania?
Yes.
Ms. Judy DeJohn Domenico? Ms. Michelle Capakiri?
I'd like to just commend you for sustainability efforts with the food recycling, but yes.
That's a big part of the congregation's goal, so it's a very nice thing. Thank you very much.
And Jeff will follow up on the.
There are no resolutions for this evening? There's no correspondence I'm aware of? Discussions and recommendations, I think we would. Just the PR is not here tonight, but maybe you can speak on his behalf. There's a concern that I have and a number of the board members have expressed about applications coming to the board and not being complete. Jeff and I have spoken about it a few times now. And I guess the second part of it is, we corrected this a few years ago where things, professional reports weren't coming the day of or late in the day, right before it, because it gets very difficult for many of us to have ample time to review it. So I'm just making a note of that. I know we don't have all the professionals here tonight, but in your dealings with them, you could make note that, and you guys know, get your reports in earlier. Comes in especially sitting at work.
Yeah.
And then stuff comes in and it's like you don't have time to even look at, look at it, so.
Well, and it's more fair for the applicant to have the information, be able to respond to any concerns. So I think if we can get back into that groove of we were getting reports, I think it was 10 days before, yeah.
What is an ideal timeframe to have a complete full checklist ready?
Well, that's a, that's a whole nother thing, that's just reports. So the checklist, I think, but let's, we can go on to that one. Completeness reviews, you know.
Because the complete list reviews, and we've had a couple of them, right? One we pushed back tonight, one we pushed back two weeks ago. Because, and of all things, it's the stormwater, which we're certainly concerned about. The state is concerned about it, the township's concerned about it. We would like to have a complete package for review, not, oh, we'll take care of it and we'll deal with it later. And as board, I know I'm speaking for most of you, I think I'm speaking for all of you, that we're very concerned about that type of approach. We want to look at the complete application so that we can review it and be prepared.
And move forward with less.
I thought they had to have a completeness review before they come.
They are.
They're supposed to.
I'll just clarify the process. Hopefully what could begin in the future and is a relative clarity, correct me if I'm wrong, but witness reviews, we usually see that it's, the stormwater plan has been submitted and that's when you can really kind of proceed with giving it to the engineers, technical review. And in the past, with some of the applications, it got to the point where some of what they were providing wasn't correct, but for, you ask us, doing in the past is pretty much making sure they have that.
So they had it, but it wasn't good enough.
So who kicks it back to say, make it?
I, I think what we, we need to do, because when, when, the, the courts at least have said particularly for purposes of, it used to be the time of decision rule, meaning on, until the application was fully heard by the board and ruled upon, a, a governing body could, could change the, the ordinance and the applicant would be subject to the new ordinance. So you would have applications that had been proceeding for months or even a year. Governing body would change the ordinance, they'd have to go back. So they, they changed it, so now what happens is you can't change the ordinance after it's been, you can change the ordinance but won't apply to the application after it's been deemed complete. So courts got into, well, what's, what's complete? If, if an applicant submits something and says, well, I submitted one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, I'm, I'm complete, I met your checklist ordinance. Courts have said, if you submit something that's so deficient, you're not meeting the terms of completeness. So, you know, if you submit, say, for example, something that says, here's our stormwater management design and it's a, as we saw with one applicant, a 1989 design and, and your office and Mr. Ferrero correctly pointed out that this is not something that's, that's sufficient and is gonna require a complete review. At, at that point, we shouldn't deem it complete. So I think what we need to do, and again, I don't get involved in completeness reviews, is perhaps Mr. Ferrero's office and Mr. Vacarella's department need to confer on all the essential elements. And only after that happens should the application be deemed complete. So for example, if either of you look at something and say, this is, this is so deficient, it's going to go to the board and all the board is going to do is say to the applicant, you gotta go back to the drawing board. Because what, what happens is, once like the applicant has been deemed complete, for example, I think with, with, with the concrete application tonight, then you get letters from the attorney for the applicant saying, well, wait a second, this was deemed complete, now you're, you're pushing us back and it leads to unnecessary confusion. So I think that approach, and, and I'm welcome to have the suggestions from board members, might, might work better.
Yeah, I think where, where, you know, you're coming into, you know, a, a board that in the past, we've had problems with applicants coming in, their stormwater, they didn't do their permeability testing. Or their permeability, like you guys pointed out, it, it failed and flooded and it was invalid. So our preference is for those things, if they didn't do their permeability testing or there's some severe deficiencies, just not, don't deem them complete and make them do the right stormwater management plan for, for the community.
So I think we're defining complete not as I submitted it, but that all the essential information that we would expect to do a thorough and complete review is by your standards been met.
Do we know that until they've already done their review? That's the problem, it's like you can.
Yeah, I mean, that's where it's the chicken and the egg. I mean, are, we, we did have face litigation because we made an applicant go back and do the permeability testing that we want. So, you know, it's like, we, you know, we have to make sure that, that, you know, that, that kind of set a consistency precedent in our community about, you know, when, especially with stormwater. And the other big thing is, we've had so many problems flooding. And like some of these applicants that have come in are in areas where the last two big storms hit them.
And it's been compounded with the changes in the stormwater regulations.
So a whole other reason to make sure that it's not just complete turned in, but complete thorough to the expectations of the content that should be there.
I, I have another board, not, not this board, that, that's been kind of very enthusiastic about encouraging in their development in their downtown areas. So things like signage and lighting, they often just say, oh, you know, the applicant didn't submit that, but we'll leave it to our professionals at, at review time. And, and I had a issue recently where I had a zoning and code enforcement officer say, well, this has a very significant lighting issue, it's, whoa. And, um, you know, the issue was, well, was that something that the board approved? And it was kind of the board said, we'll submit the, the things to the professionals. And what happened is you have a construction official, building people that look at it from a construction building standpoint and say, well, that works, that meets the lighting or whatever, the codes. And then someone says, well, the board didn't approve that. And then it's your, well, do I throw the construction official, building person under the permit? The applicant's going to say that I submitted this and it was approved. So, yeah, I, I, I think that's right, signage, lighting, stormwater. We're, I think we're very good with lighting and signage. We don't typically say, hey.
Later.
Later. But that's something to keep in mind, that anything that ultimately is not submitted and they say, we'll submit later. You know.
I mean, you know, we fully recognize the ability of our professionals to follow up on details afterwards, because we're not here. We're not looking at calculations, but, you know. The other thing, though, to your bigger point about the new stormwater rules, you know, and the new, the tier A permits and all those kind of things coming down the pike. I think it'd be really good, I just saw a notice today about a grant availability from DEP for municipalities. Do you know anything more about that?
We're, we're looking into that, there's, there's a little bit more information, it's trickling out from the DEP. There, there's actually a seminar next week that the DEP's hosting that's gonna provide some clarity to that. There's two tiers of grants, I forget the exact numbers, but the municipalities that are new to tier A are eligible for larger grants. And I wanna say they're, they're not fantastic numbers, they're something like, you know, 12 to 15,000, you know, there's something in that or, or magnitude. And then the existing tier A municipalities will get, you know, a lesser sum, so.
I had read 25 grand for the tier A already existing and 75 grand for new into, at least that was the article I read.
It's the DEP, we'll find the grant eventually.
But, well, so there's, there's some money available to, to, you know, kind of get, get you started, some, some starter money. It's not gonna get any program fully off the ground, like, you know, if you put it towards sweeping, for example, that's one of the biggest expenses that new tier As will have to do, or really everybody has to do. But, you know, you'll blow through that money in a month, right? So maybe, maybe some of your inventory issues and some of your other, some, some data inventory, those, those types of things, that's probably where, where you can maybe utilize that sum of money to actually complete a task rather than subsidize something else. So we're actually still in the process of, at the same time as our offices, Paul and I, as we're deciphering the regulations from the DEP and fighting with them at the same time, you know, in terms of how this gets interpreted. We're trying to kind of come up with recommendations for you so you can kind of help prioritize how some of those grants will be available. But the goal would be then to, to, you know, help you get as much as you can from the grant.
That'd be great.
An, an issue on the stormwater, which is, is interesting here, I think there's three now in the last couple of months. There's been three applications one month before the board where you have on the other side, you have either property owners or applicants that have these larger campuses or larger developments that have a, let's say, not fully developed site, but the stormwater had been designed way before, prior to the rules. There's still a lot of folks that are still trying to get, let's say, special dispensation from the DEP in terms of saying, give us credit for the prior design. And unfortunately, the DEP has not been consistent about their feedback to the applicants.
Wow.
And, and, you know, and in, in the instance of, I'm thinking of the Cadillac dealership that went to the zoning board and I'm, and this was, these are two examples, the concrete planner ones where in our view, it's been pretty indisputable that, well, the DEP created motor vehicle surfaces of regulated material. well, the DEP created motor vehicle surfaces of regulated material after, you know, as a part of these new regulations. So if you're doing a quarter acre of new motor vehicle services a part of any modification to an old plan, end of discussion, you got to follow the new rule. So, you know, it's, 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 it seems pretty cut and dry. Yet we get, we get a lot of pushback from the applicants saying, well, you know, you're meddling in DEP, let us get an interpretation from them. But we, we, we see a lot of that going on. We're hoping that's a sort of a short-lived curve. And once we kind of get those out of the, out of the, you know, out of the pipeline and that'll, that'll kind of sob itself as we go forward. But I think people are still trying to live with these new regs and trying to find new ways to work them back.
Is it also possible to get all the materials that we need within some sort of standard timeframe? And if we're not able to get everything back from the professionals or materials from the applicant, that it just gets kicked to the next agenda? I'm just not sure what expectations we've set before.
The board has, well, if anything, revised, there's 21 days.
The applicant has to submit 21 days in advance.
Okay.
So the board members and professionals provide a review. I don't know the required date for professional reviews to be sent. In the past, it's always been a Friday before, but it should be.
I think we'd asked for a week before, but, you know.
Yeah, I couldn't remember that. Time frame and just if it's not all in by then.
Well, the problem is we can't.
The problem is, once we deem an application complete and tell the applicant to notice and send out the certified mails, if we through our own fault don't get our own reports in, that, that, that's
It's a part of the trigger then, because if it's not thorough, then our professionals can't necessarily provide a full detail.
Right, and I think one of the things, we keep talking about ordinance amendments and, and it's, 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 it's not endemic to Raritan. There's more and more towns that are looking at their checklist ordinance and saying, if we really want this, but we don't have it in our checklist ordinance, then you can't really require it. So I know Mr. Ferrero had said to me early on after he was hired, I, I don't know what a minor site plan approval is. The ordinance in, in his opinion, and I think in mine, is, is very vague. And I think one of the things that both Jeff, I, your, your office, Joe Sordillo, should really look at that minor site plan approval and maybe look at some other towns. And I, I'm making a note to do that, to really ramp that up. Because when you hear Mr. Grunberg say, oh, I think we're going to do all this parking and this and that and ingress and access and blah, 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 and it's a minor site plan approval. I'm like, no. That is. Site plan approval. And so I, I think we need to, we need to look at that because I, I think we're more and more, we're getting people. I think tonight with, with the temple, that really was a minor, that's a minor site plan. It's tweaks, but an entirely new substantive app, application for a site should not be a minor site plan.
I understand the bonding of the nonprofit, they're squeaking by every dollar, but yeah.
And you can, you can address the bonding because they, they, the legislature a number of years ago reduced requirements. So, so if you could inform the board now, what, what are the only items we could require?
Yeah, 2017 or 18, around that timeframe, right around 2017 or 18, the legislature changed the bonding requirements. And that in, in, in the past, the convention was that pretty much all of the site improvements were bonded for. Now, now there is a very clear distinction that there are really only two components, or the two categories for bonding components. One is, is bonding, you can only bond elements that are going to be dedicated to the public for public ownership. So if it's a road widening sidewalk, something in your public right of way, is something that's going to be dedicated to the municipality, then it's a bonded element. The second category is a, what they call a safety and stability, stabilization bond, which basically allows the municipality to acquire a bond for, basically, if they want to get started on footings and foundations and excavation, there's a, a formula and a mechanism to get another limited bond just for that purpose. And that's really to ensure, provide some insurance against somebody starting construction and then walking away.
And, and, but we have to adopt an ordinance. And Jeff, do we have such an ordinance in Raritan requiring that or allowing the board to impose that? I don't know if we do. So if, if that's, and I, I know Paul asks me about this all the time in, in Bedminster.
Right, right.
Because, because, you know, we, we asked for it and they pushed back and say, well, you haven't adopted
and, and ordinance yet.
So really, when, when he says they're worried about bonding, do you see any significant public dedication to what they're doing?
No, I don't.
Well, the new ingress egress is probably going to come out on the municipal road.
There, 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 there might be some along the right of way. But, but again, they, they become very limited, you know, and, and the inspection requirements are commensurate with the bonding requirements. So as the bondings get reduced, the inspection requirements.
And a bond might be what, how many points on a, on a improvement base of a point?
Yeah.
One or two, three? It's, it's not a lot of money. So if you've got a, let's just say you've got a $100,000 public improvement and, and you have to bond and it's a point or two, you're looking at a thousand or 2,000 bucks. So when he says we don't want to do a, a major site plan approval because of bonding, he either misunderstands that or we're getting, we're getting sold the bill of goods. Because it's just not there anymore.
I, I, I've seen more and more, a lot of the, the site plans where there's very limited dedication. They don't even bother with the bond, they say, what's the, what's the total bond amount? And they'll just, they'll just put the whole thing in cash at the time because it's that insignificant of an amount.
So Jeff, is that something you'll look into so that if we as a township committee need to do, take some action to create relief or clarification or whatever?
Yeah. There is bond requirements.
Right.
I, I think, I haven't looked, but I think if you want, I, I do know that's something Paul likes. He likes in, in, at least Bedminster, to have the, the ability to do, get a bond for the stabilization. And we had that with, with, what was it, crosswalk or crosswicks or crossroads?
Yes.
Crossroads. And, and they pushed back on it, we couldn't get it because the committee hasn't.
I think that's important. And, and most towns are basically, you know, that, that's a pretty simple ad. You just, with, with the ordinance amendment, you can pretty much take the legislative language.
Yeah.
And cut, cut, paste it into the ordinance.
As much as possible, if the board hypothetically has to go to a master plan, how do we limit the required bonding being that they're a nonprofit?
I, 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 I think you always have the ability to waive it, but they'd have to go to the governing body and say, look, you know, we're requesting a waiver.
That's where I think if, the technical review committee with all of our professionals would probably be a good way to just kind of think about what the flexibility and what the opportunities are. Because that way, it's, it's, everybody's hearing the same.
Yeah, you, I agree, you could build a provision in that, that the, an applicant could always seek approval from the governing body to waive the bond.
Right, so I think first we get to see if we have the ordinance and what the ordinance says. And then we'll know what our flexibility is. And if we don't have an ordinance, that's a whole nother thing.
And/or have exemptions for nonprofits as you do with. Is there any other things including development fee ordinances?
Yeah, because I, I think, I, I know in other things in our ordinance, we have exemptions for fees for the fire company for.
Yeah, we've exempted, but if it's not clear and they're under the assumption and it's not, like, let's make it easy.
All right, we'll take a look at that.
Okay.
Good discussion. Next meeting is Mar- March 8th, we'll see who shows up. You got the answer then, no?
Well, they, they've been deemed complete, the problem is.
Can you revoke it? Can you revoke completeness upon further review?
You know, what is their problem? Submit the plans. So what, how do we get?
When they last came in was one of the reasons we didn't, we've had so many now. Had they previously been told not, that their plans were deficient and they needed to submit revised plans?
They revised it based on the comments from the DEP. The reason they didn't show.
Stenographer, but so they have addressed the stormwater issues?
No, they addressed everything else.
They've addressed an, an actual plan or report, management plan was submitted with submission. So I don't know if, what they addressed with Ferrero's letter regarding stormwater has been addressed.
Okay. Sounds like you need to.
That's a check with.
Yeah, Paul, you're, you're off. Yeah, if, if it's still insufficient, I mean, we could, you could hear them, but then tell them they're going to be continued, do another meeting until they submit the stormwater stuff.
They, they will have thrown in all their professionals and paid for stenographer for not, if they don't do what they're supposed to do. We're not refusing to hear them.
Until we get the stormer stuff, we're going to continue them after they do their first testimony. Okay, I will not be here at the 28th. I will be.
Hey, we are adjourned. Oh, that's right.
Good.
Excellent, thank you.
Great.
Nice job.